To the Republic from which its hands, one nation under God, in his name, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we trust you have the Delarque God, we thank you for all your many blessings that you bestowed upon the city of Dillon. Delarque God, I ask that you continue to bless our mayor, city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads of the city. As we are gathered here on tonight to make decisions for the betterment of all the cities of Dillon and the citizens of Dillon. We ask Delarque God for your continued blessings and God it's Lord God, and we pray, we count and give your name and glory, all in your praise and all things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I have a motion to approve the agenda. We got an executive session on personnel matter also.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
And that's with the head executive.
That commotion approved amended from August 10th, regular scheduled meeting. I just got a couple of things. I got a letter, we've been looking for this for some time now, from the state of Ogden Longton on the 301 Bridge. We've been approved for a loan of $491,000 approximately with an interest rate of 1.5%. Of course, that money will be subject to the terms and conditions of the loan on replacing that line under the river whenever they start that work.
We gonna get any grant money for that?
Well, one, we haven't gotten bids yet. I doubt we're getting grant money because the highway department now is wanting us to go as quickly as we can go. In fact, already last week or week before last has been trying to spot the original line that's in the ground because they want us to abandon it completely before they build.
I think that's what we are.
I think that makes sense.
Well.
But we can't find it. Well, it's so deep, we can't get into the river. I mean, there's no way we can get in there and dig. Alright, so where does it, where does that originate? Comes down along 301.
Yeah, it comes right beside it. We forward Marco's machine, it's like the ground penetrating right on. We got a pretty good idea where it's at, we just can't.
Dig that deep?
Just can't dig that deep through.
But we're meeting, have a meeting scheduled here hopefully this week to meet with DOT folks and our engineers to try to resolve that. Alright, alright, let's see. Alright, so that pipe, that pipe goes down that way and then it crosses over the, the country club over to the, to the wellness center, correct?
Wellness Center.
Welcome Center. And also goes to.
Old Dixie An.
Old Dixie An. Alright. And we got that stench out there next to the wellness center. What, I mean, I mean, we're talking about a half a million dollars running that pipe. Where does that pipe come down Highway 9? Doesn't it come down Highway 9 from Purdue?
No, it crosses the interstate around Bass Lake area and comes up behind the Christian School. And then it crosses over Commerce Drive.
It crosses over number nine. Basically, the function of that pipe, where, what, alright, so where does it bring sewage back?
Which one?
The, um, just trying to figure out how we can bypass that area and take care of our stench out there at the wellness centers at the same time. Is maybe going down the west side of I-95 and tying into that pipe that comes across to the welcome center and bringing that sewage back that way. And then you, you, you don't have to go dig that pipe up.
That existing line's not big enough.
Not big enough?
And we're working on a grant for the stench. We are working on that, but. But with that SRF, if I'm not mistaken, that's the 10, 10 year note.
Turnaround off 10 years with 40 quarterly payments, an equal install, 10 years.
And that project, which I'll get a detail later about the bidding on it.
When's that? Do you have any, they give you any?
It just went out advertisement this past weekend. So another 30 days should be bid open.
Is it our responsibility? I mean, I know it's our responsibility, now we're not gonna try to move that pipe forward.
No.
Wants to let those people, we can all get to moving.
But DOT wants to find it now so they can adjust.
That's their problem.
We don't need to bog down in that mess.
Our trucks.
We got a very nice thank you letter from Kimmy Smith with Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center. We gave them $1,000 for their empowerment conference that they had. Summit that's coming up on Saturday, September 26th. Of course, the Dillon County Boys Youth Center now is a nonprofit, taxed it up by the 130. So they really gone to work with that. I think it'd be a good thing for the boys and girls in our county. Some announcements I'd like to read. We've got an indoor yard sale coming up September, Saturday, October 6th. I think this, Maggie, you've had a number of these, have you? It's probably the fourth, fifth, one.
One likes to do two a year. One of them's Friday, one in the fall.
Fall ones coming up on the 6th of October. The Dillon County Theater, Florence Men's, All Societies, October 10th. And I was thinking about Halloween today. I think it's on Saturday they get something. I don't think we'll change that date. It'll definitely be on Saturday as far as trick or treating this year. It's kind of an early announcement. The Junior Charity League will have their Halloween card on Monday, October 26th, 5 to 8. I assume that's at the Wellness Center also. Something I'll touch on a little later, especially the next meeting, is Taste of Dillon County. They're gonna move that venue this year from the Wellness Center to another location. I'll bring you more on that coming up at our October council. That day is October 29th, which is on a Thursday. The last thing I've got, clean up, spoke with Jerry Hill. I was a couple of weeks ago stalking him, I saw him and talked to him a little bit about the hotel motel situation that we have in Dillon. To see what we could do together to improve that, this hotel problem in Dillon, and it is a problem. They did have one team to stay.
Yeah.
In our recent tournament. I didn't think any of them stayed.
None did.
But the other teams had to stay. I think one in Lamberton area, in Florence area. I think with the, you know, the announcement of Wyman Gordon and anything else coming out here in the next 12, 18 months. I think Dillon would be a great spot for a motel to come and look at our area. Maggie, I'd like to get with you to work on it. And how we can go about inviting them to come take a look at Dillon and open our doors for, for them, just to let them know we're interested. It doesn't do a whole lot of good to host a tournament if they can't stay here. The whole issue is to bring some form of tourism into our city. But it's kind of defeats the purpose when they don't have a place to stay. Jerry's very interested in getting with us to talk about what we can do. I don't know what he would ask us to do to improve that situation. But I asked him why only one team was there. What is responsible? They were booked.
Booked.
They were. They were booked. So I think Dillon, there's a demand for a quality place to stay on top of what we have. And with Wyman Gordon opening their doors coming up here, probably with possibility of expansions out there, the manufacturing industrial areas out on the other exit. I believe Dillon would be a great spot for a motel or motel.
Because that's, that's what I hear. We need motels.
Right.
Because a lot of these folks do not like to stay in hotels where you have outside entrance.
That's right.
And that's all we have.
And we'll make an effort, Maggie, if you can get on there to start. Let's see what we can do from the city as far as any incentives, if there's any. But just, I think they would be incentivized enough to come across here and argue about motels here in our area.
A lot of government organizations will not let any of their employees stay in a motel that doesn't have a central hallway.
Right.
It's just too dangerous. And being right on 95.
Right. So that alone is, that's an economic development play also. We can get Tony Mill and the county along with, that will definitely hold Dillon County back.
A lot of corporate travel.
I think for not even.
All the EPA people that came, they weren't allowed to stay here. They had to go up to Lada, whatever that one is.
Right. So we talk about what we can do as a project for the next two, three years or maybe sooner. I think that's a good project from the economic goal. It's important the city can help put their footprint going forward. So I'll get with you about that later. If y'all have any suggestions on what we can do. I think that's a great project for the city to step up and drive that process to see where it goes.
I noticed mention about the golf youth camp.
If the golf, yeah, the problem with that is time we, see this show is gonna be the next morning. You got a youth golf camp Saturday, this coming Saturday at the soccer complex. And they also Saturday, September 26th, the following Saturday at the golf course. Must attend both sessions. I just got it today. Registration's $5 for both sessions. So really, the money's not an issue if you're interested in that, that golf youth camp. For ages 6 to 12, boys and girls, from 10 a.m. to noon. Time's just only two hours on Saturday. Again, this Saturday for the 19th at the soccer complex and the following Saturdays at the golf course. And as I mentioned, I know we got a personnel matter with executive session, so I'll hold you rest with my comments any more time.
Well, you essentially brought up the executive session. I'll let you know, I can't remember if I told you in my letter, but at Dillon with municipal court, what I want to do is, and we've talked about this several times in the last several weeks. We all know that office, Carter, municipal judge is retiring between the indecent. I had come up with some qualifications. We just need to go with those qualifications to executive session since we didn't have anything. So we can advertise and get going. But that's what executive session is concerned. We have a special event coming up at the end of this month, September 30th, with an internet streaming production of Fireball Express or Fireball Run. What's it called?
Fireball Run.
Fireball Run.
Space Race.
This group is based out of Orlando, Florida, and it's an internet base. They say it's not a reality show, but to me it's a reality show and that you only can see on the internet. And if you're familiar with Cannonball Run, if you know what a Cannonball Run is, that deals with automobiles of teens. This particular segment is gonna start in Topsail, North Carolina that morning. They will drive from Topsail to Dillon and I'll be here in Dillon around 11:30 on Wednesday, September 30th. And these folks have two missions. There's 50 teams. They have two missions. They'll do one of the two missions. One mission is to meet with Mr. James Dillon at the Dillon House and receive a clue to where they go from here to Florence. The other mission that they will be given is meet with the mayor and the steps of courthouse grounds. And he will then give them a, or they will give those folks. A clue for their next trip to Florence where they've got some things set up for them to do there. The only thing that the city agreed to do and is required to do, and it's more of a promotional thing for the reason we're doing this, is to get our name out on the internet. Is we will feed these people between 11:30 and 1 o'clock that day. And what we'll do is we're gonna feed them chicken bao because they want something familiar with our area, so you know, that's never been and that type deal. So Donnie Grimsley and his brother Randy Grimsley is gonna cook us a chicken bao.
They said they have Purdue chicken on that.
I think that's probably what they'll end up having. But they gonna cook us a chicken bao and feed these folks. And we're gonna do it on, on Main Street beside First Bank there in the Plaza area. All 50 teams won't come at one time because it's all on a timing basis. And one of the things they do while they're, they go to that portion of the, the show is not only do they eat, but they often have to check in and spend 30 minutes at that one location. And then they'll leave that location and go wherever their clue tells them to go that they have received here in town, which is somewhere in Florence. Now, another caveat of this, I think there's really a third stop and it's the Dillon Raceway. They will go there and meet with Ron Barfield and run a lap or two around the racetrack. And then I think there's four or five different, maybe more than that, locations in the Florence area. But it'll eventually be seen on the internet. I understand it has a wide following. I don't watch things on the internet like that, but there seems to be a wide following. So that's September 30th. So that's gonna be an experience that we've never had.
And it's gonna stay on YouTube as well.
So, you know, that's gonna be a good thing. We did want to let you know that. One of the items we have on the agenda for first reading is ordinance 1509, which we presented last month and council decided to table it. And that is whether or not to allow dogs at the Wellness Center. The ordinance that we presented tonight has been redone based on last month where dogs would be allowed on leash, like all other public space within the city. It'd only be allowed from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. during that 12 hour period. I don't like it, but that's left up to you folks. I just don't know how we're gonna enforce it. So it is on the agenda for you to vote on first reading tonight. Going to water and sewer, speaking of the SRF loan, we just received a project on the, a bid on the project that we bidded out a month ago. Been working on for a little over a year. Purdue lift station and Commerce Drive Lift Station due to the smell that we're having and some toxicities that we get at the plant. That was bidded out. We went over the bids Wednesday of last week and only received two bids, but they were 800,000 plus and that's not in our ballpark. We've got to sit back and rethink this. We got a grant for this, I think 350,000, Hardy?
Yes, sir.
Rural infrastructure grant and neither us nor the engineer was happy with the bid results just due to the fact that 500,000 more than what, really than what we anticipated.
That's what the engineer anticipated, 350,000?
Anywhere from 350 to 400 grand.
Kind of missed that, didn't we?
Well, from what I understand, Hardy making elaborate a little more, the biggest cost was the system that was gonna feed, is it?
Lime slurry.
The lime slurry into the Purdue Lift Station. And the company that we all decided on that gave us the best product, their cost for the initial setup would be a good word?
Yes, sir.
Was out of line. Not what, not what we had thought for, not what they had told us.
All that stuff has to be stainless steel, is that?
No, not all of it. It's just the processing tanks and the pumps. Is that right?
Yeah, it was harder. So we, we're gonna rebid it out. Like I said, we only got two bids anyway, so.
How, you know, don't you go back to that, Maggie. How big is the pipe that bores under I-95 from the Welcome Center?
From the Welcome Center?
Yeah.
That's gotta be an 8 inch line.
I think it might be a 10, if I'm not mistaken.
Why can't we, all you're getting is, is toilet stuff from Dixie Anna, from that, you know.
You talking about the Purdue flow going through there?
No. I'm talking about bypassing, I mean, we got this thing where we've got that pipe. The only reason we had that pipe in the first place is we had to tie on three industries in order to get our grant.
Yes, sir.
One of them was Dixie Anna, which is just toilets, and the other one was the Welcome Center, which is just toilets. We got a 10 inch pipe. We've got plenty of pipe. We run down I-95, on the west side of I-95, we don't have to go through that swamp. And we might be able to do something about this, this stench we've got over there by taking it and putting it somewhere in the country. You know, or further away from, you know, we might not have to do anything about this thing. If you get far enough away from it, it doesn't stink. I mean, you know. I mean, am I, am I off?
You talking about running the Purdue line towards the?
No, no.
You talking about running Dixie Anna to.
The pipe, see, that ties into the Purdue pipe. It has nothing to do with Purdue flow. The 10 inch pipe that I want to bypass, the pipe that goes through the swamp in the river that we've gotta move for a half a million dollars.
You just wanna cut that off.
I wanna cut it off altogether.
And go back around.
Go back around and just bring that flow from Dixie Anna from there, under I-95, and then bring it back to this lift station or wherever we have to, have to go.
Bass Lake.
Why won't that work?
You just have to put a lift station at the Welcome Center.
Gotta be 500,000 dollars and we can't even find the pipe. We might be able to do this project ourselves. And there's no marshland or, or wetlands up there. It's not on that side of I-95.
Not that I know of.
Well, you still have to cross the river.
I still don't understand. Still have to cross the river.
Where is, where would you cross the river?
It's the same river.
The river's in between.
Right under I-95.
Welcome Center and Bass Lake Camp.
Yes.
But I will give that suggestion to our engineer.
He just didn't see.
Yeah, you know, he might be able to get rid of that smell problem and get your pipe put down, you know, and.
Well, then I don't know how you'll solve it.
The lift station right, right there. There's no open country out there we can put that lift station.
Yeah, but you're, you're. You're not changing the flow of the Purdue line.
Purdue line, yeah, you're on.
You're not changing that flow. You just, you just.
I just solved the wind problem.
Yes, yes.
So back to this, what we're looking to do to solve the problem with the smell and the toxicities that we get. We're gonna rebid that project back out and rethink it and touch basically the state with the rural infrastructure because that grant's gonna run out here in the next several months. So we've got to go back to them to get an extension due to the fact that 500,000 is not what we're looking to do, an additional 500,000.
Is that all, is that all our responsibility, none of Purdue?
Yeah, because what we'll do is Purdue will end up eating costs of.
Where are we in our discussion with Purdue about how we go forward every month?
We're waiting to see where this goes. Once this done, because what's gonna happen is, we're gonna have, we know that once this project is completed, we're gonna have an ongoing chemical cost. And don't want to get too in depth with that on camera, if you understand, but there's gonna be an ongoing chemical cost. So they're gonna have to absorb that cost one way or another, whether it's in a yearly fee or a monthly fee of their usage fee. Because that's how, right now, that's how their fee is based on, is what it costs us on an annual basis to operate.
Well, it's based on 56% of operational maintenance in effect.
Not really 56% necessarily. This past year was 82%.
Oh, it's based totally on the percentage of that year.
Yes, that is correct. The next project we have is being advertised on the Highway 301 at the bridge for relocation. That just went out for advertisement this past weekend. We should have a bid here, what is this, the 10th, 14th, somewhere in mid-October. It usually takes about 30 days before you advertise it and get your bids back. And that is the one where we've gotten, where was it, 400,000 SRF loan? Is that what that total was?
491,000.
So right at 500 grand, we, and once again, we don't know what that cost is gonna be.
How much would it cost to get that thing out there at the, the golf course run?
A whole lot more than half a million dollars. Talking about that old, the old wastewater plant in Dixie Anna.
Yeah.
How many gallons a day does, does, do you get from out there?
Can't be much.
The most we get is actually from the Welcome Center.
Welcome Center's got a lot of flushers.
That's, 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 when you figure there's only three that's tied on it, the Welcome Center, the old Dixie Anna mill and the golf course. And Welcome Center by far is the biggest user. Because once again, all of it's strictly domestic waste.
Can't do a septic tank for that?
Well, the Welcome Center was septic, was septic tank year. Yeah, that's the reason they came on us. They had to get off of.
They use out of their crown. We don't need to have a pipe out there.
Yeah, that was one of the other reasons.
That was the whole reason we did it. That's the whole reason we tied them on, so that you had to have three industry in order to get the grant.
That is correct. And in fact, the last time Governor Haley was here, getting out what program she was here for, but that was one of the things that I spoke to her in a open session. It'd be nice if the state would help us on this, even though we are getting SRF loan, but, you know, loan, it's a loan.
Their bridge.
We put it on, and we put it in where they told us to put it initially. But that's the way it works.
Who's paying for the bridge?
Well, we are as taxpayers, but the state. And the biggest.
Now, just Dillon, the, the city of Dillon is gonna ride over that bridge.
Yeah, that's correct.
Why, why is that not part of the cost? I've not, I've not figured that out.
Well, that's the same way that, that Lada had to deal with several years ago, if you remember correctly, with the size city through. They had to relocate a lot of their water and sewer lines. They didn't have the money to do it. So what happened was the state said, okay, we'll pay this cost to do it, but you're gonna have to have, as we say, skin of the game. So they in turn accepted numerous roads over and lap that were stayed on and up and maintained. That town Lada is now supposedly owns and maintains, but we sure don't want a bridge. Am I correct there, Fitz? And then the last project that we're going out to bid or has gone out to bid, and then we talked about about a year ago, was at the wastewater treatment plant on the Orville Basin. Those bids are due here in late September. They went out the 1st of September, if I remember correctly, on the number, we were looking somewhere around the 300, 350 grand.
Right.
And that's the area where you got the catwalk that is corroding away along with the wheels, turning wheels that put oxygen into the water.
That area, yeah.
And we're always gonna need that, even if we don't go into the river.
You know, I asked that before.
Yes.
And what are we gonna give the money to pay for that?
That we budgeted for. Yeah, we, we put money into budget for that. That's why we're not making any money in order to sewage right now, because we've always got these big projects. Once we can get some of these behind us, you know, that would be a plus. We've been knowing, well, actually, all three of these projects that I've spoke about is something that we've been working on probably for the last two and a half, three years. I know Highway 301 sewer line relocation at the bridge, and that's been going on for three, almost three and a half years, discussions with, with DOT on that project.
And when are they looking to do this bridge? Are they pushing us to find the pipe?
Well, once again, we've been dealing with it almost three and a half years. This time last year, they were ready to go. They have, if I'm not mistaken, rebid this project twice. They finally, I guess this last time, has accepted the last bid that they got. Now they're, they're willing to move forward. And we just got the plans from our understanding from the engineers from then, exactly where we need to lay the new pipe. Because you can't lay it without seeing their plan, so they want us off so many feet. And the contingency right now is they want us to actually get rid of the old pipe so it doesn't interfere with the new location. Am I correct?
Yes.
New location of, of the bridge structure. So that's what we're trying to figure out right now, is how we're gonna.
We're gonna, why do we have to dig that pipe up? Because they for sure, if they put down, they would break that pipe up.
That's our thinking also. They also see if, if for some reason, and I'm paraphrasing, once they go put in footers and all and they're off and it's due to the existing sewer line, that's our cost to get that redone. So that's, that's where we see. So that's the reason I would like, that I requested, that someone from DOT come on site so we can show them what we do know and can tell us how it's to find this pipe. We can't get in the river and dig.
Only good thing is, is we're about to enter into what we usually have, a relative dry area.
But also you dig in there, it's contaminated salt. People don't realize, but there was some fuel leakage.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, out there.
That three years.
And we don't want to get ourselves involved in that, because that's still there. So that's the reason I have requested that they come to town and meet with us. So, that, that's the reason I have requested that they come to town and meet with us on site and see what we can work through.
If we go back to wastewater, just a second, you waiting on bids to come in? We budgeted three hundred fifty thousand?
For?
With wastewater for the base three, I mean, for the-
For the Orville Basin, we give or take, yeah.
And we're waiting on bids to come back in. What happens if they're over what we anticipate?
Well, we got to do something, depending on how much, how much overage it is. If it comes in at a million dollars, we've got to sit down and rethink what we got. I mean, if it comes in at four hundred thousand, we're okay. Hopefully, it comes in less than that. And it all is based on, if you bid any projects, all of them based on how much work is out there. If somebody really wants to work or needs to work, usually you get the dead of prices.
The reason I'm asking, because you were so far off on the bid, you know, four hundred thousand, what did they hunt out?
I'd be shocked if this was way off, because you got, I know I went out there already, this is pretty much equipment costs and stuff. Can't be that. And it is, just like these bids that we've done here on the last two CPDG projects, actually came under bid on those. So, you, you just never know. And when you only get two to bid, usually you're in trouble. And that's all we got, is two folks to bid on this last project. If you only get two, they're not-
They're just hurt for work.
Yeah, that is it. That's all I have at this point.
Okay. I'm opening up our citizens report, anything anybody would like to bring our attention. This is a good time to do, yes, ma'am?
Okay. I'm going to come back, reference to number eight, talking about the dogs again. Okay, now, last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you made a reference to the beach. And I decided to go and have the liberties of pulling this up, where the ordinance, by having dogs on the beach. According to their ordinance, they prohibited, they're not allowed, not allowed on the beach with an exception. And the exception is from May first to October, I mean, September the fifteenth. And that's only because of vacationers. And of course, they don't want to lose financials at that particular time because of the vacationers. Now, if you look at, now, the proximity that you have in real estate down there will accommodate a beach, that you have separation between the walking trail and any dogs. But you don't have that there because that trail is too small. So, forget about proximity. What you're looking at, and then going back to stench, the dogs also, right? You have to deal with stench if they're doing their business. So, that's another thing. You don't have enough walking trail to accommodate separation between dogs and people. Now, I can understand if that trail was the proximity of the whole thing according to a beach, but it's not. So, and reference, going back to your reference, dogs are not allowed, except for a particular area to accommodate vacationers. Now, if we're looking at from seven PM to seven AM, all right? And that's going to be static. Why not accommodate a fluid date? If you're going to have, and accommodate some hours, winter hours. Summer hours meaning from six PM to six AM. And then from winter hours, you go from seven PM to seven AM. They give accommodation for people who get there early and beat the heat during the summer. If you want to accommodate everybody, we have to accommodate everybody.
We're going to discuss that here in a little second. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, before we're done finishing business, we have none. And due business ordinance is fifteen oh nine for vividing dogs at the Wellness Center. We got the proposal, the ordinance for the nursery-
Yes.
Which has a timeline from seven AM to seven AM. I do know there's some up here and that, of course, I don't think anybody's going to get a unanimous hold of what we agree on. Before we start, is let me make one other suggestion and see if there's something that you're open to. I used not to think much of this. I had a guy coming by me the other day on the road, hollered it out of his car, and I kind of shook him off a little bit. The more I'm thinking about it, I, I like it. I went to the North Myrtle Beach Parks and Recreation the other day to carry our little dog while we're at the beach. And, okay, that's a nice, that's a nice facility out there.
One of the, probably thirty-five.
That's something else.
Eighteen million dollars.
Woo! But, uh-
I know.
But they've got a large dog park, they got a medium sized dog park, they got a small dog park, and- They had dogs, I know, I have the same opinion I had. But I had, carried hours there and all of them were, they were very heavily used. I think Dillon may be Dillon's time to consider out at the Wellness Center, there is enough for, in the back for a dog park. Everybody else is doing it. I don't think it involves a whole lot of space. It sure doesn't involve a whole lot of money. That's just a suggestion, for something to add out there where people could carry their dogs in an enclosed environment out there. They all they have is benches and some trees and a place for a little thing that you got to use to, to clean, to clean up when they leave. I, I'm beginning to like the dog park possibility. I've always liked that. The thing it does, it solves the problem of having the dogs out at the Wellness Center, we can have a specified area for them.
Years ago, Glenn and I had talked about making Elizabeth Lane a dog park, because there's nothing there. I mean, you know, it's small, it's contained, you drive up, you know, you're not interfering with other people who don't want to be there. That would be a perfect place to do that.
Well, there's, there's, we got space out there for it.
How do we enforce, Neil, if we decide to go to a dog park, how do we enforce the dog to utilize a dog park?
Well, if you got a dog park, I don't think you should be allowed to have the dog anywhere else but in the park.
So, how about our public sidewalks and the other parks? Are they still allowed to walk them on a leash?
They are, well, Mike, so we're just talking about the Wellness Center.
Right.
Yeah, those, those other parks, sidewalks, that's free, right away. That rules for the state, those are not our sidewalks.
Right.
You know, and I don't want to contradict you, but I think that the leash, the dogs are not allowed except after, from seven P to seven A at the beach. And I want to think they have to be on a leash.
Yes.
In those winter months, I think that the difference is-
There's no time.
No, no time, no leash. I think that's the difference. They are allowed, no dogs are allowed there.
Not according to this ordinance. Winter time, it says at all times.
Which town is that ordinance from?
Myrtle Beach.
Myrtle Beach?
Myrtle Beach. And then this is North Myrtle Beach as well. Right, they say dogs in public, we're going to leash at all times, right? No dogs are allowed on the beach between nine AM and five PM from May fifteenth through-
Nine AM to five PM, they're not allowed, correct. And outside of that, there, they can be on the beach with a leash. But you've mentioned a month, from May to September.
Yeah, I'm only going from May to September because-
In the other time, the other months, they're not allowed at all?
Uh-uh, that's exactly, from May to September.
No dogs allowed on the beach?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's true.
Mayor, you brought up the dog park.
Well, they don't enforce it.
They're, they're ordinance.
How, how do we, okay, how do we enforce the leash law that we have in effect now?
We don't, unless we have a complaint. Pretty much, we do agree.
Okay, and our leash law calls for it, any dog, with the exception of dangerous animals, they cannot-
Any dog off your property has to be on a leash.
Right. And that's on the sidewalks, our city parks, or the, the walking trail out here at the, I mean, at the sidewalk fields. So, pretty much everywhere we have a leash law that says that everybody has to have them on it, except for dangerous animals.
Unless they're on their own property. Under command, on their own property. Going back to the dog park, I've been to one, to the complex in North Myrtle Beach here this past summer. We were doing a tournament down there, and I, I noticed a dog park across the street there from one of the parking lots. But I didn't really pay much attention, is, I know that was a fenced in area. Was there any walking area for the, for the handler? I mean, it's-
No, they just paddle.
So, and, 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 I mean, I guess my point being, a dog park could be utilized for some people, but also, you know, it doesn't utilize the time to walk with your dog. And, and people like to do that, too. Whether it's down the road, in our neighborhood, I see that all the time, or on the walking track, or, you know, whatever.
I want to ask one more question. You brought this to our team a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Okay. And going back, I don't know, maybe Tyler or Dr. Wallace can ask us questions. Is there a lot of influx of dogs on leashes on the walking trail during the course of the day, or is there?
I've never seen, I've never seen it.
I work out there, and I have not seen any. Now, I have seen one dog in a playground.
And that's pretty good.
Yes. Well, that was before inside.
I just think we're trying, I just think we're going to do something that doesn't even need to be addressed. I mean, I talked to both people that have been over the grounds. Both of them are for sure, they've had any problem with any waste of animals on the track or right beside the track. The biggest problem they've ever had is wild dogs coming up not attended. And I just think that if we look into doing different leash laws there, what are we going to do when one person complains that we need a leash law around the city park? We need a leash, I mean, I could easily sit here and say, we need a leash law front of my house. I've got two small dogs, someone walks their dog by my house anytime of the night, two in the morning. My dog's here and will smell them, they're steady at the door trying to bark at them on Lane Street. Do I come up here and say, we don't, shouldn't allow to walk dogs at any time? I, you know, I just think that, I heard, the, the only complaint I've had is from this lady here about the whole dog situation. Not from a city employee out there that's had to clean up to anybody else. I mean, that's the only complaint I've had. I don't know, maybe y'all had other people come to y'all, I haven't.
I haven't. I haven't.
We've had a deer problem. They come out of the swamp, and certain times, that even three or four of the grazers-
Mine is, I think we've got a leash law that we're, we enforce the leash law we've got, and if it becomes a problem, relook into it. That's my opinion on it, so.
Well, the problem is this, you got, I'm not out there at six o'clock in the morning and five thirty in the morning. Okay? We're walking that time of the morning because we want to beat the heat and have to go to work also. So, when I've been doing this, and other people come out to walk their dog at that time of day, you won't see them. But we do. So, you do have people that at the same time we do to walk their dogs, because they have the same thing I do, walk the dogs, go home and get the kid ready for school, whatever they're going to do, and go to work. So, with those factors in mind, they get out early, too. So, you don't see the dogs because you're not there. But we're there, and so we see the dogs out.
The one I'm asking is why, or why are y'all two, the only two people that has came to anybody or nobody? I've asked staff members at the Wellness Center, have y'all been addressed by this? Like I say, I've asked two or three people and nobody else has-
Well, then I, I hear that at five thirty in the morning, you only got one, two people that's out there, but they're inside the gym, right? Because I've been there for years doing this, and even only when I'm here, I quit going out there because of the wild dogs out there. Right? And the dogs out there chase people, and, and, and some of the girls in the shop got bit by the dog out there. So, a lot of them quit going over there, and they started coming to the Wellness Center.
So, what y'all want is just the dogs not to be allowed to be walked out there at all?
No, the wild dogs, you can't stop the wild dogs, right? Because you don't have enough people to go out and catch the dogs. Well, the only thing we're asking is the fact that if you let them walk the dogs, they don't walk by a certain time where there's no humans out there with them walking, and the dogs are sniffing on the people. I'm not a dog hater, I grew up with dogs, but I don't have it in my house, because I don't like dogs that like, like that. But I don't want them to stumble on my legs, I don't want to get upset, and I thought kicking at them because of my leg, and they don't want to bite me. I don't want to go through that, it's unnecessary.
Okay, well, we'll figure out, right now, we got a vote on this thing up or down.
This is going to go to two rings.
Yes, we got to have a first and a second. Do they even, all right. All right, ordinance fifteen oh nine for titted and dogs at Wellness Center other than the specified times. Do I have a motion? I'm making a motion. I hear a second. With no second, then this-
David.
No, it's not David, it's, it's, it's Gil.
It's David.
It's David. With that, I still think that could be used for a park out there for the dogs. Could be a possibility for someone to-
We can go down there. I'm going to move here to look into where there's some dog parks and kind of get some ideas on-
The dog parks at Market Commons are nice. There's two, a small dog park and a, a small dog area and a bigger dog area.
Here's one in Charlotte, North Carolina, which is just a small town about the same size as Dillon. It's really nice. I'll get you some pictures of that.
That'd be good, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember reports, I'm a smart, this Connie.
I don't need any more, I'm good.
I'm good.
Glenn.
Yes, sir.
What happened with the, the deal on the payment, the payment?
It's on their list, my other thing, on the seat. That was told by Mr. Earl Wilson, who chairs that committee, he told me that. Now, whether it's been bided out, I don't know. Probably, if it is, it won't be done until the spring. Because we'll have to be scared, huh?
The only thing I have is to say thank you, and it's something we don't do very often, to say thank you to our mayors for the time that you spend personally. You spend a lot of your personal time.
That's mine, of course.
You did, you did.
You'd be glad.
You'd be glad. It's a pretty thankless job, and you are the face of, of the city of Dillon. And you represent the city of Dillon very well. You spend a lot more time than you get paid for.
We have a duty.
I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that we on council don't have to do nearly what you do, that you are the one that people go to, that you're the one that gets called on to meet the cars for an hour and a half when they come through town, and be at every sign.
Any other mayor does, Johnny, but I appreciate it.
It's appreciated, we do thank you for that, that's all I have.
Well, I have a couple of things I'd like to mention. The forty-three thousand dollars that King's Pizza bought Williams, have we already received that?
Yeah, that's been received, that was- That would have been done in, was that in June or July?
Well, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, it's been put in the general fund.
The body cameras for the police officers, have we?
We've got ten right now.
We've got ten. What we going to do, we going to?
Waiting on, the state is supposedly, they passed legislation back in the spring where there's going to be supposedly great money here since they have mandated, if I'm not mistaken, I think legislative passed that. So, if they mandate, they're going to try to divide the funds to offset some of that cost. And they also, in that legislation, to reimburse those departments who did this. So, as soon as that happens, then. We have ten that are used strictly for our street patrol officers. And the legislators, along with the municipal association, and, and Criminal Justice Academy, I believe, are working on policies and procedures. And that's not due until, I think, late spring or early summer next year.
So, can we go ahead and purchase body cameras for all police officers and then they reimburse us back?
I don't know that yet, but we do have ten. And right now, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but every street officer, uniform officer has one, if I'm not mistaken, or is assigned to one.
How about the, are we going forward to rate study?
Yes.
We starting to move forward that?
Yes.
And how long do you think it'll be till we get some results?
Probably the end of this year, December timeframe.
If there's nothing else, we're going to counsel this guy to make a motion, adjourn, go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.